Okay, welcome everyone. Can we please rise for the pledge? Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Consider Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we'll pull the meeting to order. I'll open the meeting up to public comment for agenda items only. Okay, we'll close public comment. And tonight, it's my pleasure to welcome our elected student representative, Logan Carl. And I believe our district clerk is going to give you the oath of office.
Okay, this is official. Okay, Logan, I'm just gonna um give you the statement. Raise your right hand, please, and sorry yourself, Derek. And Mr. Freer is gonna get a nice picture there.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my position as student representative for the Highland Central School District according to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations. Thank you so much. Logan will have a few words um when it's the student um comments.
Just want to congratulate Logan. Uh I kind of know Logan from two sides. I've known him as a just newly appointed firefighter in Highland Fire District. Logan's gonna serve uh as a, he's not a, we used to call him cadets, but now he's a firefighter with restrictions. So uh he can do everything else a firefighter in the Highland Fire District can do, but we will not let him into a burning structure at this point in time. So he'll have all the training. Uh we welcome aboard here as a student rep, but it's happy to see that you're involved in our community and you're involved in your school community as well. So congratulations. Okay, uh we move forward with our consent items. Uh E A one to C two. And as usual, if uh anyone wants to pull a topic out or uh a resolution, we can pull that out. We can have a discussion. If uh you would like explanations, have any questions or anything that's on the uh consent agenda, just shout it out and then hopefully we'll get an answer for you. Okay, uh I'll entertain a motion to accept our consent items. Motion by Tom, second by Jen. Any further questions?
The only question I had is the extracurricular. Those are existing, correct? There's nothing new there.
Correct. They were just ones that weren't filled in the spring when we did the the first round.
Okay, thank you.
All right, uh we have a motion on the floor. We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. And we'll move right into our principal's monthly report for the new school year. Start with the elementary school.
Since we are starting with the elementary school, um we just basically gave him tenure, correct?
Yeah, so I just want to recognize uh Mr. McCormick is with us this evening and uh so we just granted his tenure effective uh September thirtieth of twenty twenty-five. Also, this evening, we have Victoria Barone, Tom Mauer, and Samantha Sapon, and all of those candidates will be, all of those tenures will be invited to our reception in June. So congratulations.
All right, good evening, everyone. Just one quick little addition, two quick little additions. I just want to say thank you to Mike, my head custodian of my building, and the staff. We're doing a phenomenal job of getting the building ready and looking amazing. The floors looking like glass, so like I, they really, I didn't think it was gonna happen going into that week, weekend, and uh you know, they did a phenomenal job, so the entire crew hats off to them. And then the only other thing is just we kicked off our PPS meeting tonight, so. Any questions?
No, thank you for a smooth opening to school.
All right, folks. Good evening. Um quick update, or addition, I should say. Um we gave out Chromebooks last Friday to our sixth graders, and I want to thank Rich and his team for their support. They were there like the first two days, that the day we handed them out and the next day, to make sure all of our sixth graders and seventh and eighth graders could log in, which is very important, and do all the things that they need to do. There was some increased security this year, which was, which was great. Obviously, we want our secure networks, which added uh things to our passwords. Some middle school students who are used to having very simple passwords couldn't do that anymore, so they did a great job supporting us. That's why we really wanted to thank them for that. And obviously, O and M, uh same similar, amazing jobs getting the building ready. Uh we have, I think we have the best building in the world, obviously, but it's, it's when they do it up nice, it's beautiful, uh vintage, obviously, and uh they crushed it, so. Thank you to them too. Uh that's all I got. Anybody have any questions?
Thank you, Andy.
Good evening, everybody. Uh following suit, just want to recognize our directors uh with, starting with athletics. You know, the coaches coming in uh over the summer to get that preseason going. Pete, amazing job in his crew getting the building ready. Um really staying on top of that capital project and making sure things are getting done right. Uh Rich, same thing with the Chromebooks and our chargers and getting our freshmen squared away from the high school. Um John, thank you for the food service aspects, getting the meals and breakfasts. I know we had a little bit of a shift and, you know, working through. I know you guys have been doing great with the concession stand. Um and lastly, Kathy, um really working with me closely uh to get our timing down with BOC being that they are a little bit further away. Kathy has been amazing in making that happen, and we have our late buses up and running, so thank you to everybody. Um that's it for my additions. Any questions from the high school report?
Just quickly, you mentioned the concession stand, so are we opening that after school? Um or?
It was fifteen years.
Okay, so just for the game, okay.
It's just a single soccer game without, no, out there right now.
Oh, awesome. That's great.
Yeah, so the first home football game, the line was from the window to the back fence of the uh uh football field, so that was pretty cool to see.
Yeah, that's good. So it's been doing pretty well then?
Cool, so long as the line was being processed.
Yes. No, yeah, they were, they were knocking it out.
I'm sure we're having growing pains and you're talking about all of that, but it was great to see. The people will come out, that's for sure. The weather's been spectacular, so.
Good, thank you. Anybody else? Thank you, Brandon. Okay, our directors. Uh we have all our directors here this evening, so like usual, if you have questions, shout them out to our director and we'll get the answers.
I think just in general with HVAC, in the spaces where we have cooling, are they all working at a hundred percent? It's been some hot days.
Uh Mr. Miller? May I all commission?
I'd like to answer that question. They fired him up last week, started running them. They're fine tuning them now. They're in balancing, doing the balancing and everything they have to do on them. You can go into areas and you will find that the temperature is cooler than it was, but it's, everything's not perfect yet. We don't have it, it's not all tied into the building management system yet either, so we can't see what it's doing, but it's working. The next big step is getting the heat up and running.
Anybody else? Yeah, Kathy, how'd the uh buses go the first couple of days?
It was a dream.
Seemed to be, yes. There's a, thank you. I know we have a slight issue with the BOC run, just because they're up and running in the new facility and
Yeah, so just because they were a little bit further away and, you know, that was something that um I've been working with, with Joe Salmon, who's the, one of the directors up there, and Kathy, and we, we've got it in a good place.
Yes.
Um so that there is no disruption from what we've been doing previous years.
Right.
So our, our departure time going there, coming back is all back to what it's been prior to them moving.
And while we're talking about the new BOC's uh lab up there, uh any feedback from students?
Um it's been, it's been a mix. Um I think the kids are very eager to get into, you know, diving into their programs. So I think that, you know, some final touches definitely need to kind of take place for that to happen. Uh but that's like the main thing is that they just want to really get into, into the work, and they're not really there yet.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yeah, in our outlook as trans- uh transportation driver shortages, has that affected our instructional program at all? Like any approved field trips for the year been canceled in the foreseeable future?
I don't believe so. Any field trips that have been come, coming to you, we've been able to?
There's only one that I didn't know if I could do yet. There was a trip to Terry Town in there, and I told them I didn't know if I could do it yet. Right now, we have to put it on hold. I just don't have the people, the staff. It is very difficult. It is a challenge for drivers right now. Just don't have them. They're not out there.
So you mentioned, um, you know, some schools do outsource before they short their instructional program. Is that a possibility? And I don't need an answer now.
I mean, I think it's a possibility, but I think some of those outsourced places are having the same difficulties with drivers. I know my wife works in another district and that's all. Uh it's contracted and they're having driver issues as well. Driver shortages. I mean Kathy might be able to speak more to that.
So I have spoke to coworkers in other schools and contractors, and they are having the same difficulty. They'd like to help, but they just have such a driver shortage. In my homeschool too. You know, in Allenville, they were very late today. There's short staff just on the regular.
We've made a lot of um, we've made a lot of gains with firefighters, volunteer firefighters receiving certain benefits, exemptions to tax and that type of thing. I, this is such a shortage that we might have to move in that direction. If you're a, I don't know, a public bus driver, then we, we have to start reaching out to our legislators. We have to incentivize this because the industry has an issue.
Correct.
No, I don't, I don't disagree with that, and I know, I think Kathy, most of our training is all free of charge to, to the new hirees.
Yeah, so, and I know we are such destitute drivers, but the federal motor carrier has put even more restrictions on getting your license. It's not just DMV or DOT. It's the federal motor carrier. Between physicals and the training program that we have to go through is a minimum of two months. Everything has to be documented, filed, and entered in a, in a system, in a computer system. And you have to take not only the driving parts of it, you have to do an online course now for it.
Is this specifically for schools or industry-wide? If I drove a bus for the city of Albany?
Yes.
Yes, to?
For everything. This is even truck drivers. Doesn't matter what city, school, municipal.
We gotta be able to identify, you know, it's all in the guise of safety, but at the same time, overregulation, we know, can strangle an industry as well.
It's doing that.
Yeah, it is doing that, because this used to be for the retired person, and we've got plenty of people, but now the retired people are like, oh, we're not going through all those classes.
So let's keep this type of conversation in mind when, when those BOC's meetings uh happen regionally, because we want our other board, fellow board members of other districts to, to hear about this. They're facing the same issues. And try to create a collective voice behind that. Thanks.
I know we've touched on a, a bunch of our directors. Frank, anything on, on athletics that we should be updated with? Everything's running smoothly?
Just very busy. I mean, tonight, we have a double header of soccer. Uh the boys won overtime. The girls will probably start in about ten minutes, and uh tomorrow, we have modified football, and then uh Friday, we have football, so it's going by quick, the last two weeks, so.
Fields are doing, field is doing okay up there? Other fields are using your own good?
Yep, yep. Everything's practice, everybody's practicing, facility's fine. Um.
There are some areas that have been worked on and are still incomplete. Do we have a timeframe? Part, I think some of the area where they moved the steeple, isn't there, is everything sewn together over there? I thought I saw some flaps or something going on.
Always gonna reach out to Mr. Miller to give us an update.
The steeple chase was relocated. It was paved, blacktopped. We had to wait, we had to wait twenty-eight days before they could put the rubber coating down. That's scheduled for the week of the twenty-ninth. That's four or five days.
Yeah.
Four or five days to do that, and then um.
All right.
So if, as soon as it's done and it cures in a very short period of time, the white lines dry, it's usable again, so that's.
Have we accepted this field?
We have, I think they've gotten the, the punch list all completed on the actual field. I'm not sure if the track was a hundred percent yet.
Support services is, is apprised of all that information?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay. Any other questions for our directors? Thank you all. And the moment we've been waiting for.
All right, everybody bear with me. This is my first one. Uh well, so we'll start in the elementary school, and the elementary school gives its thanks to the PTA for donating over eight hundred fifty dollars worth of books to fill the book vending machine. Students can earn a special coin to select a free book, and this contribution will ensure that many students have the joy of taking home something new to read. The PTA also made kindergarten orientation extra special by providing a beautiful backdrop and balloon arch, creating a wonderful photo opportunity for all of our students and families. We should all be very grateful for their thoughtfulness and support. Onto the middle school. Middle school students are excited to be back in school and already, and already are diving into their learning. On Friday, September fifth, our sixth graders received their Chromebooks. With a little bit of trial and error, they were able to create safe and secure passwords. We'd like to give a special thank you to our tech department for their support in making sure that the rollout went smoothly. This year, three Highland High School seniors, Cameron Dutra, Hayden Hans, and Emily Berrian are bringing a new club to the middle school called Chit Chat. Each week, they'll spend time during lunch with middle school students, giving them the chance to connect with older peers in a safe and inclusive space. The goal is to provide support, guidance, and encouragement, and to show our Highland Middle School students that they have role models at the high school who were once in their shoes. We're very grateful to these high school students for helping to make the middle school an even more supportive place for all. Clubs at the middle school also began last week, and students are looking forward to another great year of extracurricular opportunities. This year's offerings include science club, art club, intermurals, chess club, GSI, jazz band, multicultural club, drama club, National Junior Honor Society, peer leadership, reading club, the school newspaper, school store, yearbook club, and student council. And now moving on to the high school, the class of two thousand twenty-six kicked off their final year of high school with the tradition of senior sunrise. On September fourth at six fifteen AM, seniors gathered on the walkway over the Hudson to watch the sunrise together as a class. It was a memorable way to start the year, and we thank both senior class officers, advisors, and the PTA for helping to make this event special by providing snacks for everyone who attended. And a huge thank you to the Walkway Over the Hudson for opening their gates early for the senior class. And then that's all I have for today.
That's a lot. Thank you, Logan. Any questions?
Yeah, Logan, um being that the device policy was so new, how are classes going? Uh you find that your fellow students are pretty cooperative with the new policy and expectations?
I think the policy has been going well so far. It's definitely helping the classroom stay more focused, engaged. There are, you know, students are upset that there's no more free time to use your phones. Last year, we were able to have them in lunch and in study halls. And I ha, I think I've seen maybe a little more phones get taken away, away this year so far, but I'm sure that it'll smooth over at a point.
Let them make sure it was opening, not their school board.
Yeah, yeah. I think that's, a lot of people don't really realize that it was opening.
Yes. Very good. Thank you. Thanks.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you, Logan. Uh we'll go to our assistant soup, Dr. Boyd.
I'm in trouble this year having to follow Logan every day, so we might have to switch up the orders. Yeah, I think you kind of heard throughout all the buildings, um the word smooth was um pretty consistent in all of them, so our opening, um I would say went really well. Um and again, a tribute to all of the, the, you know, players and planners uh in this. So it's a lot of planning over the summer that starts really in the spring. Um so to have a nice, smooth opening uh was great for the students uh and for the faculty. The cell phones has seemed to gone pretty well so far, you know, as Logan commented. Um I've been doing walkthroughs with the building principals through all the classrooms. You know, from me coming in, I didn't see any, obviously, you know, my, I'm doing a walkthrough, you know, and we're looking at all those classrooms. Um but uh it was nice to see. As an administrative team, um we picked student engagement as our focus this year, um which really works nicely with that uh reduction of the cell phone. So we're gonna see um how much this helps with student engagement. It's gonna be our focus um when we're meeting with teachers and talking with them. Um and one thing you're gonna hear me talk about um a lot this year, and uh it's coming out from New York State, is more and more about the portrait of a graduate. Uh I'm gonna have a more detailed presentation and information for you guys in October. Uh I'll be attending the NISCUS um conference uh in two weeks, and I'm hopeful to get a few more updates on that. Uh but I'm gonna kind of lay out where we are so far in this process. Uh we are pretty early on. They didn't really adopt the portrait of graduate until July of this year. Um so they got, they laid out a timeline, which has kind of been adjusted throughout, um but I'll, I'll go over all that in October. Um we'll wait and see if we get some more information, um and kind of what that's gonna look like over the next few years uh for full implementation of that.
Any questions for Dr. Boyd? Okay, thank you. Our superintendent.
All right, so I get to follow all the principals, the student rep, and the assistant superintendent. So I'm gonna say also, smooth. It was the first thing on my list, and I'm gonna prove it by showing you that that's what it said. I don't want to sound like a broken record, but we had an extremely smooth opening. Um so thank you to everyone involved. Uh just things that have maybe not been mentioned. Uh we uh want to thank transportation. They got all of our bus drills done in those first uh couple of days of school. And uh we talked already about our buildings and grounds and the crew to get our fields and our buildings up to speed very quickly with a lot, not a lot of uh time after the building project uh culminated at the end of the summer. So far, we've had uh all of our elementary and middle school open house nights, and they were very well attended. Tomorrow night is the high school at, starting at six PM. Uh district administration, as Patrick said, will be attending the NISCUS uh conference at the end of the month on Sunday, September twenty-eighth through Tuesday, the thirtieth. And then just a, a thanks as far as I went to the first football game, and it was a proud moment to see the stands filled, but that did not get done just because we had a, we had a lot of people behind the scenes, including our athletic director, making sure that folks were where they needed to be. Our technology team worked uh tirelessly to make sure that the sound was good. Buildings and grounds, they always do a wonderful job. Food service also out there uh getting that concession stand up and going. And our business office, he doesn't get uh shouted out very often, but he uh made all of the pieces come together on the, on the backend, so thank you to all those folks. Tomorrow, uh Mr. Opitz and I have the honor of uh joining our new student rep at a breakfast at Ulster BOC's. Uh this is actually a statewide session. It's gonna be telecasted from uh the commissioner's office with a, a series of speakers and some training for all of the student reps. So student reps are not a new thing to us in Highland. We've had them for ten or fifteen years now, but this is a new mandate across the state, so the commissioner wanted to make sure she rolled out a welcome to all those student reps. So we'll be meeting tomorrow morning at BOC's, and we're looking forward to that. And that's all that I have.
Any questions for the superintendent? Okay, I would be remiss if I didn't mention our business official, Desmond. If you would like to say a few words of how helping the school's going and your department?
So I'm gonna start off with the same word everybody wrote down, smooth. Um. You know, we're kind of the quiet smooth. It's accounting department. We, you know, we do look at things behind the scenes and thank you, Joel, for making the, giving that compliment there. Uh a couple of things that have happened um within these last couple of weeks. One, we got the taxes out. So folks, everybody should be happy that we sent out the tax bills. Number two, more importantly, we've got the state. It is.
Gotcha.
All the state reports were sent out and submitted on time. Joel certified them uh last week or on the fifth. So we've got all our state aid information in the portal. Just waiting for the state to kind of review it, make sure everything's up to snuff. Um the audit has been finalized. We will do our presentation to the audit committee in October. We're gonna run through those numbers, and we'll like to give them ahead of time so we can probably talk about some of the issues we want to discuss. Um the internal audit will kick off in October, November. We're gonna do the risk assessment, which we've done before, and they're going to look at state aid, which was one of the items they had talked about. And um finally, in October, which we're working on now, will be the budget calendar, which we'll put out. I know everybody said yay to that. I can see that, but that's what we're working on now, so. Smooth.
It's never ending. It's like the Macy's Day Parade. They start planning the day after. It's like the budget.
Sure.
Thank you, Desmond.
Thank you.
Again, it's still on my radar, and I mean, this would be uh Director of Transportation. This would be uh Peter Miller and also Desmond. Uh we're three months away from starting our budget calendar, you know, in January. Uh we still have that issue where uh come twenty twenty-seven, and that's the budget we're working on starting in January about electric uh vehicles, so we need to get some kind of direction, hopefully from the governor's office and state education, where we're going in that direction, because I don't think this district wants to, you know, uh be shocked by some mandates that might come down, and we're not prepared to.
They have to be executable right now, even if we wanted to. It's not executable.
So we need, we need that direction. I gotta move on that. But anyway, thank you for your report, Desmond. Um anybody have any questions for Desmond? Okay, we'll move on to Board of Education, new, under new business, special education district plan. Be resolved, the Board of Education, upon the recommendation, the superintendent approves a September twenty twenty-five special education district plan as presented to the board at this meeting. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Janine, second by Tom. Any discussion?
Uh just well put together. Nice job on that. Nice job, I'm sorry.
That's a plan that gets updated every two years.
Okay, any other questions? All of them favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Okay, under all business, um in front of you, you have our Board of Education Goals and Mission Statement. I know we had some discussion at our last meeting. We were a little short-staffed at that meeting. Uh I know Ed's not here this evening, but I'd like to move this forward tonight so we don't keep uh dragging our mission statement and our board goals and district goals, so. Um kind of put everything together, and the first paragraph, which would be the Board of Education Mission Statement and Goals. Um the mission statement, the Highland Central School District Board of Education is committed to fostering a safe, supportive, and respectful environment where all students are empowered to think critically, act compassionately, and thrive as productive global citizens. We provide equitable, equitable access to high-quality education that nurtures academic achievement, creative and athletic passions, and social, emotional wellbeing. Guided by a long-term vision of advocacy, belonging, and excellence, we prepare students for success in higher education, skilled trades, and lifelong learning, always honoring the values and resources of our community. I know at one point we were um gonna strike global out of citizens. Mike, I know you, you had mentioned that. I mean, where does everybody feel with what we just presented, or I read to you?
If everybody likes it, I'm, I'm, I'm good with leaving it in.
Go away?
You know, as soon as I see global, I think American. Why shouldn't I say American citizen? Why shouldn't I, you know, but that's one out of seven. Two out of seven.
Anyone else?
I'm good for a moment. I think it's fine.
Move it?
Yeah.
Move it as in the way it reads? Remove it. Say citizens?
Just says thrive and thrive as productive citizens.
For what it's worth, I'd like to see it stay, just so I have my voice out there, but I know I'm outnumbered.
Based on earlier conversations and some other stuff that was put out there, I also would like to see it removed.
I would agree. So we're gonna remove global.
Yeah, we're gonna just say citizens.
And we're gonna, we're okay with the mission statement.
Read it several times.
Yep, it is longer than, than normal, but uh I think it's well, well-prepared. I mean, it touches on everything that we've been talking about over the years. I'm okay with it.
I like the whole document, quite frankly. I think it's gonna span more than one year. So I see that twenty-six there, but I start thinking about seven, only because I like seeking fair and cost-effective contract settlements. We got nothing to, they're all in play. We've got nothing to negotiate, but I said, well, come next year and the year after, we're gonna be involved in that. So anyway, just. So anyway, just just thoughts on that, but.
We're all good with the, uh, the Board of Education goals and our district goals. We haven't touched our mission statement or this in a good, good number of years. So I think it's, it's best that we, uh, update it and try to achieve, uh, our goals as a Board of Education to push, uh, all the stakeholders into our district goals.
I think the mission statement's good. It, like you said, it is long. But when I look at it, I can't see anything to take away, so.
Alright. We're all good with it. It's a consensus, so we'll move this forward. Uh, it'll be put on our website. I don't, we don't need a, a motion to move it. I think there are consensuses here that we're, we're gonna move this, move it forward. So this will go on our website.
Website, it should be communicated with staff, you know, everybody.
Yeah, I just wanna bring up the last bullet under the Board of Education goal, "monitor government's practices to avoid micromanaging." Do we need to include the part that says "to avoid micromanaging"? I just feel like "monitor governance practices."
Do I have parentheses around that? I have it too.
I, I just.
I think it's like a sixth finger. Let's lock that off. Sorry, sorry about that. That could be removed.
The last, uh, part of that, just "monitor governance." Not striking the whole thing.
Yeah, just, oh, God.
Might be managing somebody needs to communicate.
Yeah, and I think that's one thing this board, I don't believe, has micromanaged, uh, the running of the district. As far as I can remember. Others might say yes, but I say we haven't. Okay, so we'll put that aside. I wanna thank everyone for your input. Took us, uh, three months, three, four months. I mean, we really, we started the process back in December, but we really didn't kick it off again until, uh, late spring. Early summer. Okay, uh, board retreat. I'd ask Joel, while I mentioned at our last meeting, I think we're gonna have a board retreat coming up soon. Joel's going to look for a facilitator. I think that'll be beneficial. We'll find a venue that's nearby that we can, uh, sit down, have the facilitator, uh, present some topics for us to have discussion. Basic for a retreat is not to hash out what they're discussing, uh, at our board meetings, but to kind of find a way where we can improve what we're doing at the board. Uh, once we get someone that we can bring on board, we'll float out some dates to everyone to see if we're all available, and then we'll set it up. I'm gonna say, uh, for the end of the year, we'll, we'll have something in place or maybe sooner than that. Okay? Anybody have anything else for old or new business? Uh, miscellaneous, under correspondence. I just wanna, I ran into a retired phys ed teacher from the Highland Central School District many years ago. She asked me if the board and any future plans for, um, a capital project, would we entertain redirecting tennis courts back on our campus? She feels that tennis is a lifetime sport. If we can, you know, engage our students during, you know, phys ed classes or whatever it may be on campus to participate, that would be beneficial to all our student body. I said I'd bring it forward to the board. In the future, if there is a capital project, uh, we're still sitting here, might have that conversation and try to implement that. At some point in time, I think the board's gonna have to, um, consider a, a future capital project. I'm not saying it's gonna be this year, but there are items that are on our list. You know, we have priority, priority one, two, and three. Still some of those priority items that haven't been accomplished yet. Uh, and as we move forward, you know, there's, every day there's a change in technology, there's a change in, um, building setups and so, so, um, we have to keep that in mind.
Unless we were given some land, I can't even imagine where we would fit to. We probably need at least two courts on, let's say, if you wanna grow your team.
Well, there was, there was conversation at one point in time during this past project of, of, uh, looking for, we have 56 acres, 58 acres. I mean, a lot of it's the, the mountain behind us, um, to the west of us. To may possibly, if our, if our bus fleets grow and we need a larger maintenance facilities, to try to move that up to that tier. And then it does open up some space adjacent to where the former tennis courts were. So you need a, a footprint, probably the size of that turf practice field, to put three, three courts in.
The parking needs back there are so, any space that.
No, it is, but I, should I bring it up to the board and?
Yeah, very good.
Open up that conversation.
Along those lines, I guess, um, when do we look to do like an update? And I don't know if it's even really an update, but just a refresh with the, kinda like the five-year level, because I think that kind of.
One more year.
Really, 'cause that looks at, right, when you have a dip in that debt and can kind of fill it in. And then it's really up to us to decide, like, can you wait that long for a project? Or do we need to consider earlier? I think is where it starts, right?
Absolutely. And I think our, our, our five-year plan, uh, for a new five-year plan would be in 2026.
Is that a good number? I mean, there's nothing saying you can't refresh it this year, right?
Correct.
And just add it, add the extra year on.
Do you wanna resurrect the, uh, the current five-year plan?
And I guess I just ask like.
Send copies out to all of us.
I guess I just ask the needs of additional capital project. Are we thinking that those are, we don't wanna wait too long if there's needs that are there, there needs to be met.
I mean, I think the one thing that we need to be cognizant of is we need to close out the current project so that all of that, those aids, uh, that the aid starts to flow back to the district. We can bring in Bernard Donigan's office to do a presentation again so that we have an idea of when that next round of debt is falling off. It's not any time in the.
Anytime soon, right?
In the real soon future. But we also have monies in that, um, capital reserve fund that we could do a small project with something there. But, uh, that would have to be identified. I think a building condition survey is probably in order at the conclusion of this project.
So maybe the first thing of, like, beginning of next year, so the beginning of 2026, the support services committee just looking at really what the needs are. And are there really emergency ones that we need to? I mean, when you say emergency, right, even if we started doing a plan right now, by the time you actually end up in construction is how long from now, right? So, um, maybe that's where we start, is just let this close out this year, and then beginning of next year, have support services make that one of their priorities, is to look at what's left on that list in addition to whatever else has been identified.
And there were aspects of our current bond issue, um, that we identified prior to going in, but it had a fall-off because of costs.
Right.
So there's those that would probably be priority one back on the list. There are several there that fell off the list because of, of the cost restraints.
And that, they won't, sorry. We're under other constraints, whether you can only do a certain amount of work at each site. So that, I don't know that the support services committee or I am versed enough in what those numbers are. I think that's where you'd get your financial advisors in to give you the, the idea of.
But I think first, regardless, like, we need to look if we need, you know, I'm just throwing out there, a boiler here.
Right.
Regardless of what aid we're gonna get, we're gonna need it one way or another. So we just need to identify that first and then say, okay, does that fit within? If not, we know it's gonna cost more.
We have reached out to our fiscal advisors to, to a presentation. That's gonna be hopefully either October, November, but we have reached out to them because the last one was with the previous administrator, and they wanted to have one so that way we can use that as a platform to go forward with some of the financial things we're doing.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, anybody have anything else for miscellaneous, good and welfare of the district? Okay, I'll open the meeting up to public comment, general items. Alright, um, no public comment, we'll close public comment, and I'll ask the board for motion to adjourn. Motion by, yeah, second by.
I have one other item I forgot. I should've wrote it down. Wanted to, um, is, is the board interested in sending? So pet crematorium was withdrawn or all that, right? It's a foreign issue, but I appreciate the work done with our colleagues at the town. So we could send a letter to Dave Plavchak, Al, just saying, you know, Highland School Board, thanks the work of the town and its committees on the pet crematorium project. And, uh, we appreciate all they do, something like that.
There is a public hearing coming up soon where the town's going to, uh, in simple terms, not allow any crematorium in the, in the town. I think that's coming up this week or next week. Okay, we have a motion to adjourn from Jen, second by Heather. All of them favor?
Aye.
Pose? Go Carrie. Thank everyone for coming out this evening. Enjoy the new school year and see you at the next meeting.